Oh, welcome. Oh, okay, sorry. Meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 11th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say it fudgably. Hey, Christie, can I roll call, please?
Here, Stan.
Here.
Carol.
Yeah.
Donnie.
Good.
Morrisette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll approve the minutes from the December 14th meeting.
I move approval.
Second. Questions or comments on the minutes?
Um, I watched the video for the, uh, meeting there and I, I missed out on what you had said, Mr. Mayor, to introduce Jason Stroud's presentation. It didn't come through in that video real well and it wasn't in the minutes. Was, was it, um, and my recollection could be off here. Was that statement, now it's time for us to get our talking to, or what exactly how, how was it that you introduced that?
At the last meeting? I, I don't.
Yes, what, what words did you use to introduce Mr. Stroud's presentation?
I couldn't tell you, I'd have to look, I don't know. Why? If you looked at the meeting, could you, you couldn't hear it?
No, didn't come through clear on the sound.
The meeting didn't know what I said.
Yeah, I, I found it pretty dismissive in regards to the, uh, approach of our city towards dealing with the issues that Mr. Stroud raised.
I can't, I can't hear you, Ben.
Yeah, I found that the words that you used were very dismissive, Mr. Mayor, and I think they should be reflected in the record.
Well, you said, I don't remember what I, if you know what I used, then tell me what I used.
I believe it was something along the lines of, now it's time for us to get our talking to. Is, is that the approach that the city takes to the issues Mr. Stroud raises?
Okay, I'm sorry, did that offend you?
I found that it was very dismissive, Mr. Mayor. I think the ransom rot of Republican racism starts at the top.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to offend anybody with whatever I might said. Sorry, Mr. Stroud, if I offended you with whatever I said at the beginning of the meeting six weeks ago. Okay, anybody else have anything on the minutes? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next we'll approve of the bills with Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $211,000 and I need to open up another tab here. I apologize on the delay. And that would be in the amount of $211,425.98.
Second. First and second on bills, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. Is everybody in the audience has anything like to talk about that's on the agenda? Oh, okay, I just have one quick statement I'd like to read, um, before we move on to the next thing on the agenda. Um, I just want to reiterate that Sunday, January 9th was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I'd like to use this opportunity to show my appreciation and reiterate how critical our law enforcement is to the City of River Falls. This talented and dedicated teamwork with extreme devotion under difficult circumstances and often asked to put the well-being of others above their own. They serve unselfishly regardless of peril or hazard to themselves. Their steadfast performance deserves our gratitude and respect. I want to unequivocally state that as Mayor, working with the Police Chief and the City Administration, know that the city recognizes the sacrifice that these faithful men and women and their families make to keep our community safe. To the men and women of the City of River Falls Police Department, I want to say you have my support and loyalty without question, reserve or hesitation. Okay, thanks. Next, we'll move on to, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing. An ordinance number 202112 relating to Craig Section 16.04.090 of Municipal Code relating to applicability of Title 16 of the Municipal Code to condominiums. And this is a second reading and disposition. Does anybody in the audience have anything like to stand up and talk about this? Yep, come on up.
Presentation for you.
Thank you. It is, I don't need to talk very loud.
No.
Okay. So, I apologize if I do talk too loud. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Matt Ead with ACA Engineering Hudson, here tonight representing EW Homes. Mark Silla is also here tonight and he may or may not come up here and speak depending on how my presentation or comments go. If passed, we respectfully request that you grant 120 days before the ordinance is enacted to allow us to finish a condominium project that was started in the summer of 2021. For those of you not familiar with the project, we've been in the process of designing a condominium project in the southwest quadrant of Highway 35 and Glover Road. You can see on the screen, um, Glover Road, the map is to the north, State Trunk Highway 35 and Glover Road and the, the project, uh, location is in blue. Uh, the project will be a commercial park with condominium garages and assisted living. Uh, the additional 60 days that we are requesting will allow us the opportunity to finalize the process that we started with, uh, during the concepts in middle in May of 2021. As part of the design and approval process, I originally contacted the city planner before finalizing the concepts submitted to the town. Uh, the purpose of contacting the city planner at the time was to determine impacts and requirements of this project relative to the City of River Falls extraterritorial subdivision ordinance. Feedback from the city planner was that the city did not review condominium flats as it was not part of the extraterritorial subdivision ordinance and no submittals and no submittals were required. Uh, in early October of this year of 2021, we found out the city was in the process of arising the ordinance to include the review authority of condominium flats. After meeting with current city staff, it was our understanding that, uh, since this was an ongoing project, it was an attempt to be grandfathered in. Uh, we were subsequently informed that the city did not grandfather projects in, but instead would recommend, staff would recommend to the city council a 60-day timeframe to allow us to complete the process. Based on the required public meetings, public hearings, uh, the 60 days does not allow enough time to complete the entire process. So once again, we respectfully request 120 days instead of 60. I would like to very briefly just go through the project so you can see what it, what it is. Let me see. I don't want that. There we go, thank you. Thank you. So, as you can see in the, the site plan, we had the off ramp, uh, off exit, Glover Road is, uh, where the mouse is and State Trunk Highway 35 is along, um, the east side of the project. There'd be condominium garages, um, and I think it's important to note that these are not storage units. They're condominium garages. I think one of the people during the review referred to it as man caves or places to store and work on, you know, Harleys or cars, et cetera. Uh, and then also there would be a, a component of assisted livings, two buildings right there. Um, we believe, um, the project will be an asset to the community. We're going to heavily burn as, as people drive down here, we're going to heavily, we're going to burn to provide some screening and landscaping. Um, we have storm our management provide an additional buffer. Um, they're, like I said, they're not, uh, storage, uh, buildings. They're going to be nice, attractive looking buildings. Now I'm going to see if this will work. Uh, so that's, that's a view of, uh, the storage condo garages from the highway. So they would have, they'll have awnings and be a nice, they won't be a middle building. Let's see where I'm at here. The assisted living again also is an attractive building. Let's see if this works a little bit. Uh, so there'd be assisted, uh, living units, two buildings. Uh, from the beginning of the project, we've been also designing the project, uh, so that if or when the city is capable of providing services, a layout would easily accommodate it for both sanitary sewer and water. Um, we've designed it also to meet the city's slow restriction standards and also the design would meet the city stormwater design standards. Uh, we have made a formal application for rezone beauty and condominium approval and need to work through township and county approvals. So, the final step is St. Craig County would need to do the final approval. So, uh, again, thank you for your consideration.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Ead?
Yep. I just have, um, a couple of quick questions. Did you, did you, you might have said this and I, I didn't pay attention. How many of these garages will there be?
Uh, it, it will depend on the size because each building will be, but it's probably around 190 of them.
Okay, and, and what's, would the, um, population be of the assisted living building?
I, I believe it's 24 residents per the two buildings.
Okay.
So, 24 each building.
Okay, so about, about 40, 50 people, okay, thank you.
Well, just, just so I make sure everybody understands and I understand.
Yes.
Your, your biggest concern was going from 60 to 120 is just 60 days from today isn't quite enough time for you guys to get, go through all the paperwork, go through, grow through all the means you have to go through. You have to work with the county and you have to work with the township and the city.
Correct, we, we've already made application and so we've been working in the concept and trying to refine the layout and making sure the design worked and then we, we made an application. We have two or three public hearings and multiple public meetings we need to attend. Uh, we've got to go in front of the county, county board, uh, as the final step to do the rezone and the ordinance text.
Okay. Well, I, I don't have any, anything else.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I will, does anybody else have, yep, come on up.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Tom Schumacher, I'm a attorney from Baton Rouge and up in Richmond, Wisconsin. I represent the property owners who own some land about two miles or so north, west here of this, of the city. They have been owners, this property came into existence as a parcel back in 1991. Uh, at that time, it was established as a condominium. Uh, since that time, it has changed to a planned unit development and since kind of at the same time that that happened about 1994, 95, the, uh, St. Craig County changed its zoning ordinance and about the same time that they approved, that this could be a planned development, they then changed their zoning ordinance and did away with planned development. And so, since that time, uh, some of my, some of my clients brought parcels there, constructed at homes. There's a twin home, a single family home and a building that's a, uh, it's a large pole building, it's heated. They're out there. And so, when the clients came to me, uh, they wanted, there's a title issue because, uh, there is no planned unit development under the St. Craig County zoning ordinance. And so, we proceeded allowing the primary, uh, to get a plat for subdivision. We went through the, uh, uh, town of Troy, uh, went through that process and, uh, then proceeded on with, uh, St. Craig County and the City of River Falls. And in speaking with the city and their view on that, uh, subdivision, uh, it was generally not favorable, let's say that. And so, uh, we looked at it small, we talked about it and then, uh, I was discussing with the city attorney and I said, I don't believe that the ordinance actually addresses kind of names. And so, I would like to proceed with a condominium plat that's substantially the same as the primary plat and, and go that route. And so, that's the route we proceeded and that's in part what precipitated this change in the River Falls extraterritorial subdivision ordinance, which is fine. And so, the, uh, city has looked at that, they proposed this change in ordinance, I've looked at that, uh, and they proposed the 60-day effective date, which we would be okay with. But I know my concern for my client's concerns is that this, uh, is not something that's on virgin land and hasn't existed. It's been there for quite some time. What we're really trying to do is straighten out the title issues because a couple of these clients are older. They now want to sell this property, they've owned it for 20-plus years. And we just have these title issues because there is no subdivision, uh, and now, uh, planned unit development existing under the ordinance and so there's title issues with respect to that. The treasure, St. Craig County treasure wasn't really know how to classify this. And so, they had some inputs and they want to get this straightened out, registered deeds say the same thing. And so, we proceeded as best that we could under the circumstances with the ordinance as it were. Now this change has come about, we're close to the finish line. For my clients, it's been a long 20-year, we had, well, recently, probably five years, we're trying to get this straightened out. I became involved, you know, more recently and trying to push it across the finish line. So, uh, I'm just here in favor of, my clients are in favor of the council approving this amendment to the ordinance. That's fine, that fits the condominium as part of it, but we would like to give in just before that happens. And so, if we could have that 60-day before the effective date allows my clients to resolve kind of a long-term, uh, problem that they've had with the title issue. And as a practical matter, I would look at this differently frankly myself. If this, there was nothing there and we were just starting from scratch, but it's there and we're just trying to kind of, you know, fix the problem that exists and not trying to do anything further. I should just also say, originally when this was, uh, condominium and then as the planned unit development, it was eight, uh, eight minutes, uh, both in the condominium and eight lots in the planned development. It's now been, uh, reduced to six and, uh, there's one property that has two and the other four property owners each have, have a parcel there. So, we're just trying to get the title in running with something that they can then pass. You don't think it, uh, you know, they all, the homes are there, have their subject systems, have their laws. There's, you know, if somebody decides that they're going to build on one of the remaining lots, you know, they've looked, uh, and tested for the perks for that, so that's all in place. But they'd have to come back in any event to, uh, the municipalities for building permits and everything to do that. So, my concern and my hope is that the, uh, the council, as far as the ordinance, I think that, that that's fine and that, but they would grant this 60 days so we can just kind of finish the process and get this across the finish line. So, thanks.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Schumacher?
Good, good, thank you.
Yep, thanks. Okay, anybody else have anything on this? Okay, so we'll close the council hearing or close the public hearing, reopen the council hearing. Maybe it'd be best, uh, Amy, Ms. Pearson, do you have anything you'd like to say to us? Anything you, any information you want us to have in case anybody has any questions for you?
I'm happy to answer questions. I don't know that, you know, we're looking to, to block either of these developments. They found a loophole in our ordinance that we're looking to close and they're simply asking for additional time. The only issue I would see from the city's perspective is if, within the 60 or 120 days, if we were to receive another application for a condominium plat, then we would have to, to potentially honor that. Those chances are probably slim, so, um, otherwise I can answer questions if you have them.
Okay. Well, any que, any other questions on this? Yeah?
If we were to suggest an amendment, would we do it after we have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, first off, let's take a motion on this first.
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2021-12, uh, creating, uh, section 16.04.090 of the Municipal Code related to applicability of Title 16 to the Municipal Code, the condominiums.
Second. Okay, first and second, questions or comments?
Yep, um, I would just like to say I've, uh, developed land before, two and 60 days is not very long. If something goes wrong along the way, you're out of luck. So, uh, I, I moved that we extend the deadline to 120 days from the 60.
Second. Okay, got first and second out of minutes, move to 120 days. Let's, uh, work with that. Question or comments on the 120 days?
Just a quick question if I could, Mr. Mayor, back to Community Development Director Peterson. In the event that somebody were to come in with a plat in that 120 days, I guess they would, they would be able to go through with, I was going to say, I'm trying to out loud here. They would, we wouldn't have ETC, ETZ oversight on it, would we?
Correct.
Yeah, so they would be able to sneak in if you, I, that's probably not the right word to use, it's not the intent that would think. I don't think there's people out there watching that go, oh my God, I gotta get this condominium plat in. So I think we're okay there, but.
Okay.
Thank you, I just.
Any other questions on the 120 days? Okay, so we got first and second on the amendment to go from 60 to 120 days. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now we'll move back to the regular, the, the original ordinance. And we have first and second that, any more questions on that? Okay, all in favor of the original ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next we'll move on to the consent agenda. First, uh, Quick Trip, uh, number 453, change your agent. Uh, next one's a resolution approving the public participation plan for the comprehensive plan, bicycle and pedestrian plan and the outdoor recreation plan. Next one is a resolution approving Sterling Pond's fourth edition final plat. Uh, the next one is a resolution approving an, an addendum to the developers agreement between the City of River Falls and the Archon Development for Sterling Ponds. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll number three, five and six.
Anybody else? Otherwise I'll take a motion on, on the four.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda item number four.
Second. First and second on four, any other questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Morrisette, you, let's start with four. Or I'm sorry, start with three.
Three. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could indulge, uh, the council, if I could ask the agent for the Quick Trip to step forward so I can ask a couple of questions. I, I, I ask the same questions of every agent who comes in front of the council requesting, uh, to be an agent for a liquor license. Have you taken your responsible servers, uh, certificate program?
Yes, I have.
Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes, I do.
And you understand that if an alcohol-related violation occurs, even if you're not on the premises, it is your responsibility?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion, we, uh, accept the change of agent for Quick Trip number 453.
Okay.
Second. Okay, first and second, any other questions or comments on that one? All in favor?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor, I have a, a question on that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, what is the process? We're, we're seeing a lot of these with Quick Trip and some other stores of a change of agent. What is the process for once an existing agent leaves, who is the responsible person? And, uh, if that agent leaves, one of these establishments is no longer employed there, are they continuing to sell alcohol without an agent? Is that, uh, I, I'd like to know more about the process there.
Good evening, man, council, um, in the right city clerk. So, once we are notified by an establishment, a name is given to us and that individual immediately takes that responsibility. Sorry, I'm having a hard time breathing through this. Immediately takes that responsibility until they are formally appointed by council. So as soon as they let us know that person is actually acting as the agent until formal approval.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome. Okay, anything else? I think we're already moving on.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, okay, move on to number, uh, let's see, number five, Mr. Morrisette.
I think, I think five and six possibly, depending on how the city attorney feels, can be taken together.
They're two-step a resolution, so I would address them.
So, we'll do, we'll do them separate. I have a conflict of interest, so I have to pull it so I can abstain, so.
Okay.
Another council member to make the motion.
Okay.
Just mark me as abstaining, please, Christie.
But we'll start with number five.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution approving Sterling Ponds for additional final plat.
Second.
Okay, first and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now I'll take a motion on number six.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution approving an addendum to the developers agreement between the City of River Falls and Archon Development for Sterling Ponds.
Second. Okay, first and second on number six, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to Administrator's Report. Scott's got something for us, if anybody has any questions for Scott?
A couple of updates if you're thinking of questions, um. Christmas tree pickup continues, um, January 10th yesterday and to the 17th. They ask the trees have ornaments, tinsel and any tree stands removed. If you have a tree over six foot tall, uh, they would appreciate you cutting that in half, um, for easier pickup. COVID booster clinics are offered January 13th for ages 16 plus at the U, University Center Falcon Nest. Um, that clinic is sponsored by Freeman Drug and so you can sign up through, um, the Freeman Drug website and there's also a link to that on the UW website, I believe. January 24th, there's another clinic that's ages 12 plus. Uh, that is a booster clinic at the library sponsored again by Freeman Drug. Um, that one, again, you can sign up at the Freeman Drug, uh, website. Community testing, there was a question about whether community testing was going on at UWRF during the, the school break and the answer is, is. So, community testing is available Monday through Friday, 8 p.m., or 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. at Hagstedt Hall. Um, you can find more information about that at, at uwrf.edu/falcons-forward. And there's information or campus and community testing. So just to clarify, the community testing is available. It's not required via student or staff. I know my family's, has used that testing center often. And those are rapid tests with the ability to follow up with the, the PCR test for confirmation. So that's a real good resource for the community. We want to welcome, on January eighteenth, we're going to welcome two new staff members. Josh Solinger accepted the position as our new finance director. And David Pinetta will begin as our, a new water wastewater operator on January eighteenth. Reason they're starting on a Tuesday is because January seventeenth, city offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day. And I do want to thank, we're, we're working through some of the new, newness of city hall, city council chambers upgrade. We've got a number of new pieces of equipment installed. We are also subject to supply chain issues. So we're waiting on a couple key pieces of equipment. Hopefully, you mostly didn't know we were missing those. But the crew, this, this work was done almost entirely by internal city staff. So I want to thank Mike, John, Jaden and Tom Schwallen, who are the three members of our IT staff and Tom Schwallen from facilities who basically solved every problem and found, found ways around things which will allow us to have this project done significantly less than, than what we budgeted for. So you notice new, much higher resolution screens, which should allow the council and the public to be able to see maps and other things much better than our old screens. Sound has been improved. And then we are working on being able to do hybrid. We had opportunity to test that a little bit tonight and we got to work through some issues still with, if a council member is unable to attend in person for weather or other reasons, we, we want to be able to have the ability for the council to determine what your rules are about that, but then have council members join remotely in a way that they feel part of the meeting and also that you can understand that they're part of the meeting. So we're not there yet, but we're getting, getting better. And also it should enhance the, the public's ability to, they get a little closer to you all when they're talking to you. And then we'll also be able to use this room for community events and for training and others because we've added some flexibility by taking the fixed, fixed wings off the council dais. So we'll be able to use the whole room. Whereas before, we kind of, we lost about half of the room for most times. So this will still be the primary municipal court location and council. And then we'll be able to have, I think, more of our committee and commission and special task force and other things meeting in this room too, because we'll have ability to put tables together and things in here. So all with audio/video capability, which is going to give us the ability if, if we choose to enhance our kind of broadcasting of all the different types of meetings than what we've got now. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Go ahead.
This is for Scott or Jason. I'm, I'm not sure who is regularly in touch with AZ Snyder, but how are the, how are, the last I heard, the hospitals were full, but still able to take people? How are we doing this week?
I think our last official update was last week, right? So I don't have a new number that I'd want to give you in public because I don't, can't rely on that, my memory for what we came up with. But we know that as an employer, we've seen an increase in, in the amount of COVID-related absences, quarantines, illness, PTO days. So I can tell you about that because I know that to be happening. And, and certainly there's pretty, I think significant would be an okay word to use for the school, this cases, cases of involving students or staff at the school to work, which they're, the reason I mention them is not because they have some special outbreak, but because they have data that they're providing so we can see what's going on there. So I suspect the schools reflect the greater community now. There isn't something special going on at the schools. But the cases are, are up. But the last time we had an update from hospital capability was that it was very tight, but that they were still able to treat. We obviously want, I think we want to reiterate to the public that if you have a medical emergency and you need medical assistance, you should seek it. We have an emergency medical system that's very capable. And let, let them figure out the capacity issues. Don't, don't spend time trying to figure out that when you're, you're in need. So that would be some of the reiterate to the public is just, you still should seek medical attention as you would otherwise do so. But it's, it's been, there's certainly an increase which what you saw in the last official report we gave you. And we'll have, then those are on the weeks opposite of council. So you'll get another report from our office next week. The school district, I think, has been doing theirs on Fridays. So there'd be some, some, for those of you who have kids in the school, you'll get, I think, that automatically. And then I believe there are informations on the website also.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Scott? Okay. I just have a couple of appointments I'd like to make. I'd like to appoint Jacob Prow to fill a vacancy through December of twenty twenty-six on the housing authority. And I'd like to appoint Adam Girl to fill, to fill a vacancy through May of twenty twenty-three on the utility commission.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We accept your appointments.
Second.
First and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second adjourned. Any polls in? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.